Good afternoon, everyone. This is a hybrid special session of the Permanent Council. We have delegations in the Simon Bolivar and we have some delegations connected outside of headquarters. Between these two groups, we have the following delegations participating: Antigua and Barbuda, Argentina, Barbados, Belize, Brazil, Canada, Chile, Colombia, Costa Rica, the Commonwealth of Dominica, Ecuador, the United States, Grenada, Guatemala, Guyana, Haiti, Mexico, Panama, Paraguay, the Dominican Republic, Saint Lucia, Saint Vincent and the Grenadines, Suriname and Uruguay. We have quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Assistant Secretary General. Good afternoon, colleagues. I have the honor to declare open this special meeting of the Permanent Council pursuant to Article 14 of the statutes of the Permanent Council and Article 37 of its Rules of Procedure. The meeting was convened at the request of the Permanent Mission of Guyana as contained in document CP/INF/9985/23 to receive the Honorable Brigadier Retired Mark Anthony Phillips, Vice President and Prime Minister of the Cooperative Republic of Guyana, whose presence I acknowledge and who I warmly welcome to our council. Colleagues, in accordance with Article 43 of the Rules of Procedure of the Permanent Council, we will proceed to adopt the Order of Business for this meeting, as set out in document CP/OD-2464/23. If there are no objections, and I see none, the agenda is adopted. Proceeding now to the second item on the Order of Business, I once again welcome the Vice President and Prime Minister of the Cooperative Republic of Guyana to this Permanent Council, and I have the honor to invite him to address us. Prime Minister, the floor is yours.
Your Excellency Louis Almagro, Secretary General of the Organization of American States. Your Excellency Sir Ronald Saunders, Permanent Representative of Antigua and Barbuda to the Organization of American States and Chairman of the Permanent Council. Excellencies, Permanent Representatives of the Organization of American States, ladies and gentlemen. At the outset, I would like to express the gratitude of the government and people of Guyana for this opportunity to speak to you about the controversy with Venezuela, which remains an enduring and now immediate threat to not only the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Guyana, but the ability of our country to protect our people and develop our resources for their economic and social benefit within the framework of international law. Guyana is also grateful for the efforts of the Secretary General of the Organization of American States, including his continued advocacy for a peaceful settlement of the controversy in accordance with international law. Indeed, given its implications for peace and security of the region, the OAS has given close attention to the controversy over the years, and we are appreciative of this. My presentation to you today will not burden you with the vestiges of our colonial history, which are responsible for the situation we have today. Suffice it to say that the matter remains before the International Court of Justice since Guyana instituted proceedings against Venezuela by application in March 2018. In our application, Guyana asks the Court to resolve the controversy that has arisen because of Venezuela's contention, forced formally asserted in 1962, that the 1899 arbitral award regarding the boundary between the colony of British Guyana and the United States of Venezuela is null and void. Excellencies, you are aware that the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela raised two preliminary objections to the Court's adjudication of the matter, forced challenging the existence of the Court's jurisdiction in 2018, and then in 2022 Venezuela challenged the exercise of that jurisdiction. Both matters were dispensed with by the Court, which in its judgment on December 18, 2020, affirmed its jurisdiction based on the provisions of the Geneva Agreement and in its judgment on April 6, 2023, rejected the preliminary objection of Venezuela. Since the decision of the Court as rendered in April this year, Venezuela has expressed its disapproval at the Court's ruling and is now demanding that Guyana returns to the now defunct bilateral dialogue on the issue of Venezuela's illegal claim to Guyana's territory. Venezuela accuses Guyana of reneging on its commitments under the Geneva Agreement, but the reverse is true. That agreement obligates both parties to pursue the means of settlement chosen by the Secretary General, and he has chosen the International Court of Justice. It is Guyana that is faithful to the Geneva Agreement and the decision of the Secretary General. It is Venezuela that is defiant and non-compliant. Instead of complying with its international obligations, Venezuela has further embarked on what appears to be an intensified campaign of intimidation and threats to force Guyana to concede to its wishes. Perhaps the most concerning of these is the planned consultative referendum of the Venezuelan Parliament. On 24 September 2023, Venezuela's National Assembly passed a resolution calling for a referendum regarding Venezuela's unsubstantiated claim to Guyana's Essequibo. Both the government of Guyana and the Secretary General of the OAS condemned the passing of the resolution as illegal and improper since it violates the Geneva Agreement of 1966 and is inconsistent with the decision of the United Nations Secretary General to submit the question of the validity of the 1899 award to the ICJ for a ruling. Despite those condemnations, on the 23th of October 2023, the government of Venezuela, through its National Electoral Council, published a list of five questions that it plans to put before the Venezuelan people in this referendum on the 3rd of December 2023. The purpose of these questions, which is obvious from their nature and timing and the manner in which they have been drafted, is to obtain responses that would support Venezuela's decision to abandon these proceedings and to resort instead to unilateral measures to resolve the controversy with Guyana by formally annexing and integrating into Venezuela all of the territory at issue in these proceedings, which comprises more than two-thirds of Guyana. Two of the more egregious questions being put to the Venezuelan people, questions three and five, seek to determine whether they agree with Venezuela's historical position of not recognizing the jurisdiction of the International Court of Justice as the means of settlement of the controversy and the creation of a state of Guayana Essequiba and the incorporation of that state into the map of Venezuela. There has been a lot of analyses that suggest that the impending referendum is motivated by political factors internal to Venezuela. Be that as it may, the fact is that the referendum and other acts threatening investments in Guyana directly impact Guyana's development. While my government will not discount domestic motivations for the referendum, the fact is that Venezuela has declared from the inception its unwillingness to engage in the international legal process before the Court, and Venezuela has not been shy of using force or the threat of the use of force against Guyana in the past. We are therefore vigilant of the intentions and implications of the impending referendum. Venezuela could be seeking to establish the foundations for actions aimed at the annexation of two-thirds of Guyana's territory, although the matter of the resolution of the controversy is quite properly before the ICJ. Coupled with the decision to conduct this referendum, it is confirmed that Venezuela has significantly increased its military forces and equipment on its border with Guyana. While the position of the government of Venezuela, which was communicated to Guyana, is that the security forces have been mobilized on the border to curb illegal mining, there have also been reports of the Venezuelan military building a landing strip in a zone near to the Essequibo region. No explanation about a strip has been provided to the government of Guyana, but it is clear that it is the intention of that state to increase rhetoric on the controversy and drive fear in the Guyanese population along the borders. Guyana noted with the rest of the international community the developments relating to the internal political situation in Venezuela, as cemented in the signing of the Partial Agreement on Promotion of Political Rights and Electoral Guarantees for All by the representatives of the government of Venezuela and the Unity Platform of Venezuela in Bridgetown, Barbados, on 17 October 2023. We were forced to place on record our strong objection to the conclusion and contents of the other agreement, the Partial Agreement for the Protection of the Nation's Vital Interests, also signed 17 October 2023, which describes the sovereignty, territory of Guyana, the Essequibo region, as part of Venezuela. We indicated to the international community our view that that agreement is contrary to the hallowed principles and commitment to the sanctity of treaties, respect for international law, and respect for the territorial integrity of all states as contained in the United Nations Charter. The government of Guyana is extremely concerned about these recent actions by Venezuela, although all the required modalities are in place to resolve this question of the validity of the award in a peaceful manner in accordance with international law. We brought all these developments to the attention of the international community, particularly our traditional partners, so that they are kept informed of the actions being taken by Venezuela that threatens the economic development of Guyana, its peace and security, as well as those of the region. Further, the government of Guyana, after careful consideration of all the facts, and more importantly, the untenable, utterly unjustified impending referendum, has approached the ICJ for provisional measures specifically to ensure that the referendum planned or any other public referendum should not address any question encroaching upon the legal issues to be determined by the Court in its judgment on the merits. I want to refer to the several calls which Venezuela has been making for dialogue to address a situation, a solution to the controversy. Guyana has for over two decades been speaking with Venezuela under the eavesdropping of the good offices process of the United Nations Secretary General with a view to finding such a peaceful solution. The efforts over those years bore no fruit. In 2017, the Secretary General decided that the good offices process would continue for one final year with a strengthened mandate of mediation. He determined that after that year, if no significant progress was made towards arriving at a full agreement to the solution to the controversy, he would choose the International Court of Justice as the next means of settlement. On January 30, 2018, the Secretary General communicated to both parties that he had carefully analyzed the developments in the good offices process during the course of 2017, and he determined that no significant progress has been made and chose the International Court of Justice as the means to be used for the settlement of the controversy. The Secretary General acted pursuant to the authority conferred upon him by the agreement of the parties reflected in Article 4, Paragraph 2 of the 1966 Geneva Agreement. This case is before the Court now. Venezuela must be reminded of its obligations under international law, including its obligation to accept the ICJ's jurisdiction, plead its case to the Court, and comply with the Court's rulings and judgments. The advancement of the social and economic well-being of the people of Guyana cannot continue to be held hostage to Venezuela's contention that remains unproven and which she seeks to actualize outside of the acceptable tenets of international law. Guyana sincerely appreciates the consistent support which it has received from CARICOM, countries in our hemisphere, and the wider international community in its strenuous efforts to preserve its sovereignty and territorial integrity. Thank you for your accommodation in allowing us to present our position in this important hemispheric forum.
Thank you very much, Prime Minister, for your comprehensive and informative presentation. Our colleagues, having heard the presentation from the distinguished Prime Minister regarding the troubling situation with Guyana's neighbor Venezuela, I offer the floor to delegations whose representatives may wish to make comments. The floor is now open, and I recognize the representative of Dominica, who I assume is speaking in his role as coordinator of the CARICOM caucus. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman His Excellency Louis Almagro, Secretary General, Ambassador Nestor Mendez, Assistant Secretary General, the Honorable Brigadier Retired Mark Anthony Phillips, Prime Minister of the Cooperative Republic of Guyana, colleague ambassadors, alternate special guests, good afternoon. Mr. Chairman, please allow me, as coordinator of the Caucus of CARICOM ambassadors in Washington, DC, to read into the record a recent statement issued by the Caribbean Community dated 25th October 2023 on the matter of the Guyana-Venezuela controversy before this council today, November 1, 2023. I quote, "The Caribbean Community notes the decision of the Venezuela National Assembly to conduct a popular referendum on defending Venezuela's claim to the Essequibo. CARICOM further notes that two of the questions approved to be posed in a referendum, if answered in the affirmative, would authorize the government of the Bolivian Republic of Venezuela to embark on the annexation of territory which constitutes part of the Cooperative Republic of Guyana and to create a state within Venezuela known as the Guyana Essequibo. CARICOM reaffirms that international law strictly prohibits the government of one state from unilaterally seizing, annexing, or incorporating territory of another state. An affirmative vote, as aforementioned, opens the door to the possible violation of this fundamental tenet of international law. It is to be emphasized that the land and water in question, the Essequibo region of Guyana, comprises more than two-thirds of the whole of Guyana itself. CARICOM notes that language of two questions approved to be posed in a referendum seeks an affirmation and implementation of Venezuela's stance on the issue by all means according to and within the law. It is open to reasonable persons to conclude that by all means includes means of force or war. CARICOM earnestly hopes that Venezuela is not raising the prospects of using force or military means to get its own way in this controversy over territory. After all, it has been a longstanding position of Latin America and the Caribbean countries, including Venezuela, that our region must remain a zone of peace. Meanwhile, CARICOM insists that the referendum posed by Venezuela has no validity, bearing or standing in international law in relation to this controversy. The referendum is a purely domestic construct, but its summary effect is likely to undermine peace, tranquility, security, and more in our region. CARICOM reiterates its support for the judicial process and expresses the hope that Venezuela will engage fully in that process before the International Court of Justice, which has determined that it has the jurisdiction in the case brought before it to determine the validity of the 1899 habitual award which Venezuela questions. The Court's final decision will ensure a resolution that is peaceful, equitable, and in accordance with international law." End of quote. Mr. Chairman, I wish, for purposes of this meeting, to reconfirm the full support of the Commonwealth of Dominica to this statement by CARICOM as a path towards a final resolution of this controversy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, the Ambassador Dominica. Now I give the floor to the alternate representative of Antigua and Barbuda.
Thank you. My delegation thanks the Prime Minister of Guyana for his enlightening presentation. The Caribbean community, of which Antigua and Barbuda is a dedicated member, has made its position clear concerning the actions of the government of Venezuela in its claim for two-thirds of Guyana's territory. We are thankful to the coordinator of the CARICOM Regional Group for presenting the CARICOM position to this Permanent Council. Mr. Chairman, my delegation's stance on this matter is grounded in the principles of international law, including the UN Charter, which upholds the sovereignty and territorial integrity of all nations. In this connection, we find ourselves deeply concerned by the announcement of the Venezuelan government indicating its intention to conduct a referendum among its citizens on December 3rd. This referendum seeks to determine whether the Essequibo region of Guyana should be incorporated into Venezuela under the designation Guayana Essequiba, and it includes provisions for the issuance of passports and citizenship to the inhabitants of that area. It is imperative to underscore that international law unequivocally prohibits any state from unilaterally seizing, annexing, or incorporating the territory of another sovereign state. In this context, an affirmative vote in favor of the referendum's questions raises legitimate concerns about a potential breach of this fundamental tenet of international law. My delegation's primary concern is the maintenance of regional and international peace and stability, and we are troubled that any unilateral action could risk escalating tensions. The impending referendum, characterized by questions that seem designed to influence a predetermined outcome, appears to be a further attempt to legitimize the annexation of Essequibo. It is crucial to emphasize that these questions ignore the existing 1899 international arbitral award, which delineated the boundaries between Venezuela and Guyana. Moreover, they disregard the ongoing case before the International Court of Justice aimed at determining the validity of this award. Additionally, the framing of the referendum questions raises concerns about Venezuela's willingness to acknowledge the jurisdiction of the ICJ, thereby potentially conflicting with the provisions of Article 92 and Article 93 of the United Nations Charter. Article 92 asserts that the International Court of Justice shall be the principal judicial organ of the United Nations, and Article 93 declares that all members of the United Nations are ipso facto parties to the statute of the International Court of Justice. Venezuela's reluctance to acknowledge the ICJ's jurisdiction is a matter of concern, as it can be interpreted as a departure from the principles enshrined in the UN Charter and international law. Venezuela has persistently claimed historic and legal rights to Essequibo, which, if valid, could be laid before the Court. We urge Venezuela to participate in the ICJ process, which many of our member states have utilized and continue to use for peaceful and legal dispute settlement. This process offers a neutral and lawful platform for addressing disputes, and adherence to them is in the best interest of all nations. Mr. Chairman, Antigua and Barbuda enjoys friendly relations with both Guyana and Venezuela. We would like to see a legal and peaceful settlement of this border matter through the international legal process, in the interest of peace and prosperity of both nations. In this regard, Antigua and Barbuda urges the international community, including this Organization of American States, to closely monitor these developments, particularly the forthcoming referendum, and to uphold the principles of international law and peaceful dispute resolution. I thank you.
Thank you, Antigua and Barbuda. And now I give the floor to Belize.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, I take the floor on behalf of the government of Belize to fully align ourselves with the statement read by the coordinator of the CARICOM caucus. His Excellency His Excellency Ambassador Farrell. Chair, we sincerely thank Prime Minister Phillips for his informative statement on this issue that is of the utmost concern to all of us. Belize declares our resolute and unwavering support for Guyana in safeguarding its sovereignty and territorial integrity. As we have heard, the ongoing dispute between Guyana and Venezuela has been a longstanding issue, and in eighteen ninety-nine, an international tribunal ruled in favor of Guyana, then a British colony. That ruling, which was accepted and ratified by Venezuela, meticulously demarcated the border between Guyana and Venezuela, and now stands as an internationally recognized and unassailable border delimitation. It's regrettable that the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela has taken the position that the ruling is invalid and that the entire Essequibo region belongs to Venezuela. As we've heard, this claim encompasses more than two-thirds of Guyana's territory, and not surprisingly, it includes the area that is now known to be rich in oil and other minerals. Chair, the claim by Venezuela is baseless and must be rejected. Having exhausted all diplomatic means, this dispute is now before the International Court of Justice. Respect for rule of law requires both Guyana and Venezuela to follow the legal process and respect the outcome. We fully agree with Caricom's position that the referendum proposed by Venezuela has no validity, bearing or standing in international law in relation to this controversy. The referendum is purely domestic, is a purely domestic political construct. However, it serves to undermine peace, tranquility, and security in our region. Belize firmly believes that accepting and respecting final binding adjudications by competent tribunals is not only critical for maintaining global peace and stability, but also upholds the very foundations of the international order which we have collectively nurtured. As such, the actions of the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela on this particular issue are of paramount concern, and we call on both parties to uphold the principles of international law and the inviolable rights of nations to maintain their sovereignty and territorial boundaries. Prime Minister Phillips, once again, thank you for hearing this matter here with the OS, and allow me to reiterate Belize's unequivocal support for Guyana's sovereignty and territorial integrity and the process underway before the International Court of Justice, underscoring our shared commitment to respect for rule of law, regional peace, and security. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ambassador Belize, and now I give the floor to the Ambassador of Brazil.
Obrigado, senhor Presidente. Eu agradeço ao Primeiro Ministro da República Cooperativa de Guyana, o Brigadeiro Marc Anthony Phillips, por sua apresentação a respeito desse tema tão sensível para o nosso hemisfério em geral e para o Brasil em particular, por envolver dois países vizinhos e irmãos. O governo brasileiro sempre defendeu a solução pacífica da controvérsia territorial entre a Venezuela e a Guyana no contexto dos mecanismos previstos no artigo quarto do Acordo de Genébra de mil novecentos e sessenta e seis. Essa posição é condizente com os princípios da Constituição Federal Brasileira de dois mil e novecentos e oitenta e oito, que regem as relações internacionais do Brasil, em especial os da defesa da paz e da solução pacífica dos conflitos. A solução pacífica é consagrada igualmente pelos propósitos e princípios da Carta das Nações Unidas e da Carta da OEA, segundo os quais os países devem buscar, por meios pacíficos, e em conformidade com os princípios da justiça e do direito internacional, um ajuste ou solução de que das controvérsias ou situações que possam levar a uma perturbação da paz. É imperioso o respeito à inviolabilidade dos tratados e das normas do direito internacional. Na história do Brasil, esse princípio foi determinante para o assentamento pacífico de nossas fronteiras, legado maior da diplomacia brasileira. Nosso passado dá prova de que os países da América do Sul podem resolver os seus diferentes territoriais pela via do diálogo e do direito. Temos confiança de que tanto a Venezuela quanto a Guyana, importantes parceiros do Brasil, continuarão a se faltar pelo projeto comum inscrito pelos líderes sul-americanos no Consenso de Brasília no último mês de maio, de fortalecermos a América do Sul como uma zona de paz e cooperação. Obrigado, senhor Presidente.
Thank you very much, Ambassador Brazil. And now I give the floor to the distinguished ambassador of the United States of America, Frank Mora.
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to address this critical issue raised by Prime Minister Phillips of Guyana. We appreciate and grateful to the Prime Minister for bringing this issue in such an insightful way to this body. Sir Chair, I'd like to be very brief, but like to be as clear as as possible. My government supports Guyana's sovereign right to develop its own natural resources. The United States finds efforts to infringe upon Guyana's sovereignty unacceptable. The United States supports a peaceful resolution to this issue, whether through the decision of an international judicial body or agreement of the parties. With this in mind, we call on Venezuela to respect international law, including the eighteen ninety-nine arbitral award, as well as the ongoing international court of justice process between Guyana and Venezuela. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, and now I give the floor to the distinguished ambassador of the Bahamas.
Good afternoon all, and good afternoon, Chair. At the outset, I wish to join others who, in extending a warm welcome to Brigadier Marc Anthony Phillips, Member of Parliament and Prime Minister of the Cooperative Republic of Guyana. We welcome you to the House of the Americas. The Bahamas aligns itself with the recent Caricom statement regarding the Guyana-Venezuela border controversy and joins Caricom and colleague member states in urging a peaceful settlement of this dispute based on the rule of law. Both here at the Organization of American States and in CILAC, all sovereign countries of Latin America and the Caribbean have declared, and I quote, "Latin America and the Caribbean as a zone of peace based on respect for the principles and rules of international law, including the international instruments to which member states are a party to," and I close quotes. And those that have declared our, and I open up quotes again, "permanent commitment to solve disputes through peaceful means with the aim of uprooting forever threat or use of force in our region," close quotations. These commitments are not merely words on paper, but are principles that must be upheld in order to secure the future of the region that we want and must guide the settlement of the Guyana-Venezuela border dispute. As I end closing, Chair, and Prime Minister Phillips, by reiterating the Bahamas' commitment to supporting efforts towards a peaceful, equitable outcome of this dispute in accordance with the rule of law. I thank you.
Thank you, Bahamas, and now I give the floor to the representative of Jamaica.
Thank you, distinguished Chair, Prime Minister of the Cooperative Republic of Guyana, Honorable Brigadier Retired Mark Anthony Phillips, Member of Parliament, Excellency Secretary General Louis Almargru, Excellency Ambassador Nestor Mendes, Assistant Secretary General, esteemed permanent representatives, ambassadors, alternates, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. Let me appreciate on behalf of the government of Jamaica, thanks, express appreciation for thanks for the update provided by Prime Minister of Guyana as well as the Caricom coordinator on this important issue. We note with concern, report on the recent developments regarding the states of the Guyana-Venezuela border dispute, and particularly the proposed referendum to be carried out by Venezuela to claim the Essequibo region. In this regard, Jamaican delegation fully aligns with the position adopted by Caricom through its statement and consistently an unwavering support for international law and for the position adopted by Caricom. Jamaica views the ICJ adjudication process as a positive signal towards a peaceful resolution of this issue and one which will give validity to future outcomes. In this regard, it is our hope that Venezuela will participate meaningfully in the ICJ's adjudication process and to fully comply with Article four of the Geneva Agreement that was implemented in nineteen sixty-six to resolve the border conflict between nations. My government remains fully committed to the principles of sovereignty and territorial integrity of states as enshrined in the United Nations Charter. Jamaica fully supports the work of the ICJ and its ability to deliver justice where there is a breach of the United Nations founding principles in an impartial, transparent, and independent manner. In this regard, Guyana can count, can continue to count on Jamaica's support in defense of sovereign, of their sovereign rights and its territorial integrity. We extend best wishes for a successful outcome of the ICJ. Finally, we look forward to receiving updates as the case progresses. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Representative of Jamaica, and now I give the floor to the distinguished ambassador of Saint Lucia.
Thank you, Chair. My delegation wishes to thank Prime Minister Phillips of Guyana for his informative presentation this afternoon, and also to align itself to the Caricom statement delivered by the Chair of the Caricom Caucus. Saint Lucia reiterates its investment and commitment to the peaceful resolution of this impasse. To this end, Prime Minister, the Honorable Philip J. Pierre, within the span of one week, has visited both countries and has held high-level discussions with both leaders. It is the belief of Saint Lucia that the longstanding conflict between Venezuela and Guyana should be resolved through the International Court of Justice, which has the standing and exclusive jurisdiction for settling this dispute peacefully and equitably within the ambit of international law. The ICJ, the judicial arm of the United Nations, serves as an independent judicial body with a long history of handling complex international disputes. Its neutrality and expertise make it the ideal forum for resolving the Venezuela-Guyana conflict, assuring that both nations will be given a fair opportunity to make their case and present the evidence. We are aware that Venezuela is no longer a member of this org's body and is therefore not represented here. However, Saint Lucia's message here today is consistent with our country's desire to keep our region as a zone of peace. I thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Ambassador Saint Lucia. And now I give the floor to the distinguished ambassador, Barbados.
Good afternoon, colleagues. First and foremost, thank you, Prime Minister, Brigadier Marc Anthony Phillips. I've always felt that all Guyanese are Barbadians anyway, so. So, so this is not a departure from any, from any situation. Let me also thank you for coming here this evening and for your excellent presentation, a very informative presentation. There is a longstanding tradition of solidarity within the ranks of Caricom, and we've always tried as best as we can to go with our neighbors, and we will not sway from that this evening. We respect Guyana's sovereign right to defend its territory, as has been outlined in the eighteen ninety-nine arbitral award. What we all seek, however, is peaceful and mature solutions to the issues of conflict, and particularly within this region. In a world that has become so uncertain and so unpredictable, we must have peaceful, equitable outcomes in accordance with international law. We must also respect our reputation as a zone of peace. This is one of the few remaining areas that we can boast of as a zone of peace. Therefore, maturity must prevail. But just let me say, Barbados stands with Guyana and on the side of international law. I'm obliged to you, sir.
Thank you very much, Ambassador Barbados, and now I give the floor to the distinguished ambassador of Trinidad and Tobago.
Your Excellency Sir Ronald Sanders, Permanent Representative of Antigua and Barbuda and Chair of the Permanent Counsel of the Organization of American States, Honorable Brigadier Retired Mark Anthony Phillips, Prime Minister of the Cooperative Republic of Guyana. Excellencies, Secretary General, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. The membership of this body gathers today to receive with the deepest appreciation the Honorable Brigadier Retired Mark Anthony Phillips, Prime Minister of the Cooperative Republic of Guyana. And it is my honor to deliver the statement on behalf of the government of the Republic of Trinidad and Tobago on this very important occasion. The government of Trinidad and Tobago has consistently underscored the importance of the Western Hemisphere as a zone of peace and affirmed its adherence to the fundamental principles of international law enshrined within the Charter of the OES. These principles have been echoed by Guyana, or Caricom's sister country, and have been firmly supported by the government of Trinidad and Tobago within that body as well, as expressed in statements by Caricom. Trinidad and Tobago will continue to stand as an interlocutor of peace on this issue, which the International Court of Justice, the ICJ, has determined to be within its jurisdiction. To that end, Trinidad and Tobago looks forward to each party's full engagement in the ICJ process and to a resolution that is in accordance with the principles of international law. I thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Ambassador Philip Spencer. Now I give the floor to the representative of Grenada, who I, the ambassador. Ambassador, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Chair. We take the opportunity to thank Prime Minister Phillips of Guyana for the presentation and the information, and also the opportunity to signal our backing and support to the position of Caricom presented in the words of the statement recently issued and given to us by the head of the Caricom Caucus here, Ambassador Farrell of Dominica. We just take the moment briefly to reiterate that Grenada remains committed to the maintenance of peace and security, of stability, in the region. We wish this for, and we work towards this for both our brother members, sister members of Caricom, and for all over Caribbean region bathed and washed by the Caribbean Sea. We understand what adversities, what negativities, what destruction and instability, instability that the threat of force that the persistence of disputes bring. And paramount among this is the need for us to, every state, act in good faith with respect to their international legal obligations. Grenada does not support actions that would undermine the principles contained in the United Nations and the OES charters. The main purpose of these charters and the institutions that they establish is to maintain peace, stability, and ensure a better world. Grenada therefore insists- Grenada therefore insists that reliance is placed on the legal proceedings of the International Court of Justice and would discourage any deviation from these proceedings. Our support for Guyana and the integrity of Guyana is unwavering. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ambassador Grenada. Now I have the honor to give the floor to the Secretary General of the Organization of American States, Mr. Luis Almarco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Honorable Prime Minister Mark Phillips, we highly value your message of peace and respect to international law. Peace says every corner of the whole of America it is and should always be the motto and the main purpose of this organization. We cannot indulge any threat to peace in the region. And we have, we have listened to the message of peace of the Prime Minister, and we expect Venezuela to do the same and to stop provocations, to stop intimidation, and to stop concentration of military forces in the border. There should be no ambiguity concerning the facts of Venezuela's contention with Guyana by, and I wish to make clear that the October 3, 1899 Arbitral Award, which was determined, which has determined the boundaries between the Cooperative Republic of Guyana and the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela continue to be the legally binding instrument that remain in effect today. While yet a decision is impending on the International Court of Justice to peacefully settle Venezuela's boundary dispute with Guyana, there has been no suspension or nullity of the aforementioned 1899 Arbitral Award, while both countries await the ICJ decision and therefore respect for Guyana's territorial integrity and sovereign rights must be exercised by Venezuela. While the OAS supports all efforts that promote dialogue, we have to acknowledge that these efforts have been done before between Guyana and Venezuela and unfortunately have not been successful. They have been done for 20 years. Specifically, in the Geneva Agreement of 1966, Guyana and Venezuela conferred upon the United Nations Secretary General the power and responsibility to choose a means of peaceful settlement from among those contemplated in Article 33 of the Charter of the United Nations. The Geneva Agreement also provides that if the means so chosen does not lead to a solution of the controversy, the United Nations Secretary General is to choose another means of settlement. Let us be reminded that Nicolas Maduro asked the now former United Nations Secretary General Ban Ki-moon in 2015 for United Nations mediation to settle this government and coin border dispute with Guyana. For several years before, but specifically since 1990, both countries engaged in dialogue within the framework of the United Nations Good Offices Process entrusted to the Secretary General under the Geneva Agreement of 1966, but there was no significant progress, and engagement did not re-up solutions to resolve the controversy that Venezuela had with Guyana. On September 27, 2015, Venezuela and Guyana agreed to allow United Nations Commission to mediate ongoing border controversy. At all times, Guyana has wanted to settle the matter before the court. Subsequently, the United Nations announced on December 16, 2016, that if Venezuela and Guyana fail to settle their differences concerning the Esekibo region within a year thus by the end of 2017, then the United Nations Secretary General pursues determination and in line with the United Nations Charter will refer the matter to the International Court of Justice, unless the government of Guyana and Venezuela jointly request that he refrain from doing so. The first such formal meeting with the United Nations mediation framework of the Good Offices mandated and trusted to the Secretary General under the Geneva Agreement of 1966 occurred in October 2017 and continued in November 2017. As Guyana and Venezuela could not settle the matter outside of the judicial process, United Nations Secretary General Antonio Utrares referred both countries to settle the matter at the International Court of Justice. Guyana submitted its application to the International Court of Justice in March 2018, and before the court proceeded to review the merit of the case, the court first established in December 2020 that the ICJ has adjudicated to adjudicate the boundary dispute that seeks to confirm the legal validity and binding effects, effect of the award rewarding the boundary between the colony of British Guyana and the United States of Venezuela of 3rd of October 1899. Up today, this case is actively before the court to peacefully settle the matter. At all times, CARICOM has been fervent in their resounding support for Guyana and remain unwavering in its determination to preserve Guyana's territorial integrity. In July 2016, recognizing that any discord in the Caribbean region affects not only one, but all the heads of government of the Caribbean community, CARICOM have taken a strong position in support of judicial settlement for the peaceful resolution of the longstanding claim of Guyana's territory by Venezuela. And on September 22, 2023, and October 25, 2023, CARICOM further expressed its hope that Venezuela will engage fully in the process before the International Court of Justice, as the court's final decision will ensure a resolution that is peaceful, equitable, and in accordance with international law. Therefore, it is disingenuous for the regime in Venezuela to call on CARICOM last month to facilitate talks between itself and Guyana when the matter is presently before the courts. While parties can decide to settle matters outside of court, there is a plethora of evidence that suggests that such a settlement outside of the judicial process will not be forthcoming after several years of failed negotiations between Venezuela and Guyana. Guyana has made its position clear the border dispute will be settled at the ICJ, and whatever the outcome of the court decision will be, it will be respected and enforced. Thus, it is my utmost belief that this request by the regime of Venezuela to suggest that CARICOM be the mediator in this ongoing border controversy is intentionally divisive and does not come in good faith as it seeks to undermine CARICOM's unity in its offense for Guyana's sovereign rights and respect for international law. However, if there is anything that I am certain of, that the Caribbean constituency, as it has been said today, remain united in the face of this territorial threat. We ask why is the Venezuelan regime acting so desperately in this, in its attempt to annex foreign territory, which is an action of extreme consequence due to its legality when it has sufficient issues to prioritize and rectify for the preservation of its own people? The Venezuelan Refugee Plan, December 3, 2023 referendum contains five questions that threatens Guyana's peace and security in the country and that of its neighbors. In further proof of the Venezuelan regime undermining attempts to breach international law, the referendum seeks to avoid the ICJ determination to settle the matter peacefully and equitably and unilateral attempts to make null and void the citizenship of Guyana, who rightly have existed in the Esekibo region. One of the questions approved by the Venezuelan regime electoral council reads, "Do you agree with the creation of the Guyana-Esekibo State and the development of a accelerated plan for the comprehensive care of the current and future population of that territory that includes, among others, the granting of citizenship and Venezuela identity card in accordance with the Geneva Agreement and international law consequently incorporated inside the state on the map of Venezuela territory?" There is no evidence to indicate or suggest that indigenous communities in the Esekibo region want anything to do with Venezuela citizenship, to impose such a thing its identity theft and borderline human trafficking due to forced displacement of a people from their place of origin. The OAS General Secretariat and myself have condemned this improper use of a referendum because of it is illegal according to the 1966 Venezuelan Geneva Agreement and because similar misuse of this instrument have served as pretext in the recent past to try to justify the worst action between states, including crimes of aggression. Initiator of this territorial dispute is Venezuela, and at all time Venezuela has issued spurious and offensive claims against Guyana to set a farcical and false narrative to discredit the validity of the 1899 Arbitral Award. There is no coincidence that the propaganda machine has ramped up its force to discredit the 1899 Arbitral Award once oil resources were discovered in Guyana in 2015. The General Secretariat reiterates that Venezuela and Guyana shares the responsibility resolving their disputes in a spirit of good neighborliness and in accordance with international law and the Geneva Agreement to seek peaceful solutions to the territorial dispute. Furthermore, the OAS General Secretariat supports the Cooperative Republic of Guyana on its October 3, 2023 filing of a request to the International Court of Justice for provisional measures in light of Venezuela's unilateral attempt. The Venezuelan campaign efforts being promoted by members of the Venezuelan regime comes with the slogan "Five times yes, but we profoundly reject this referendum." Additionally, the OAS General Secretariat continues to support the Cooperative Republic of Guyana's sovereign right to practice its franchise on its established and pertinent Martin area in accordance with international law and the principles of the United Nations. In compliance with Article 21 of the Charter of the Organization of American States, which stipulate the territory of a state is imperilable, it may not be the object even temporarily of military occupation or of other measure of force taken by any other state directly or indirectly on any grounds. The General Secretariat of the Organization of American States objects to Venezuela encroachment on Guyana's sovereignty and territorial rights through intimidatory and unfounded statements and actions by its government officials that fail to respect international conventions and the 1899 Arbitral Award, for which the latter is presently being adjudicated before the International Court of Justice. With respectfully request that the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela cooperate with the judicial process to settle the border controversy peacefully, equitably, and within the parameters of international law.
Se ha dicho, por ejemplo, que los intereses son de compañías extranjeras. Eso se sabe que no es cierto mucho mucho tiempo antes cuando el territorio del Esekibo no atraía la intervención de inversores cuando el mismo era solo territorio. Ya Ushana tenía muy claro que ese era su territorio y que de ahí dependía su integridad territorial. El lenguaje usado en estos días por Venezuela es preocupante, no solo el referendo, sino también sus referencias a la migración venezolana, así como a los grupos, a las fuerzas armadas desplegadas en la frontera, así como la preocupante situación, obviamente, del lenguaje utilizado en el referendo. La Corte Internacional de Justicia reafirmó su jurisdicción. Es prioritario entonces para la comunidad internacional preservar la paz hasta que haya una decisión de la Corte Internacional de Justicia. Cualquier discurso de provocaciones o intentando decir que es Ushana quien provoca cuando es claramente eso sería contrario a los intereses de Ushana, que sostiene la fuerte posición de esperar el resultado de la decisión de la Corte Internacional de Justicia en paz. Venezuela debe actuar con la misma madurez, esperar en paz la decisión de la Corte Internacional de Justicia. Todos debemos aceptar la jurisdicción de la Corte Internacional de Justicia una vez que ella la reclama. Eso debe ser absolutamente respetado. Su jurisdicción es privativa y no pueden ni deben aceptarse provocaciones en este marco. No pueden aceptarse concentración de tropas en la frontera en este marco. El régimen debe respetar los principios de paz y buena fe. Debe evitar cualquier confusión y debe evitar cualquier lenguaje lesivo como ha venido ocurriendo. Gracias, señor presidente. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Secretary General. Colleagues, I thank the representatives who have spoken on this matter and assure everyone that their remarks will be reflected in the record of this meeting. I also thank every delegation here for the respect and honor with which they have received the Prime Minister of Guyana. We thank you, Prime Minister Phillips, for your comprehensive presentation and for elucidating the concerns and positions of the Guyanese government. We have listened intently to the issues raised regarding the territorial claims by Venezuela and the recent actions its government has taken. This council underscores the peaceful settlement of disputes, the primacy of international law, and judicial processes such as is currently on the way at the International Court of Justice on the recommendation of the UN Secretary General. It is imperative that the legal and diplomatic mechanisms established for conflict resolution are respected and allowed to proceed without undue influence or pressure. We empathize with the concerns raised, and we advocate for a resolution that is fair and just for both countries in accordance with international legality, including the Charter of the Organization of American States, which unequivocally affirms respect for the principles of non-aggression, respect for sovereignty, and territorial integrity. We appreciate the participation of the Prime Minister and the insights he has shared with us today, which significantly contribute to our understanding of this matter. Colleagues, I thank you once again for your participation and with the respect that you have accorded this meeting, in, of course, your usual way. So, thank you all very much. There being no other business, this meeting is now adjourned.